...meet and read with Harry McManus. We then, I met with Mayor Rivers and we showed him how potentially it was going to impact my property on 61 Chapman Street. Not against the bike path. Just want everybody to understand, I'm against the fact of how this was proposed. I am very adamant about that. I am adamant about the previous board. George, I would think you got the hook on this because you weren't there when this was made. So I want people to know that you did not have anything to do with this. But, here we are. We're talking about a bike path for what? For the number of people we have in this village. We already have within the confines of the local law, how you can travel on these roads within the village, another be twenty-five or thirty mile an hour speed zones. And yet, we want to bring all these people, supposed people, through our village down Chapman Street? You're coming off one of the busiest areas, which is the golf course at fifty-five miles an hour. You're coming into the village at twenty-five miles an hour. Now you're gonna have to put bike path in there, which is gonna really entail no parking of vehicles on Chapman Street. Plus, plus the fact, it's not only one side, no. You're possibly talking two sides. Plus, you're gonna talk about the library, not the library, but the post office, Chavez Agency, the laundromat, all these areas. Where's people gonna put their totes for their garbage every week? Some of these people are limited now as to where their parking areas are. Short driveways. Now they're gonna have to figure out how they're gonna back into their homes to come out so they don't, if there's somebody there, not the time of people. I made a presentation to the town board last week. And it was interesting to find out that when I went there, I presented the map that George gave me, George Rivers, of the proposed bike path. They had no idea that they had changed. Now, this is what they're telling me. I gotta go at that at face value. You know, it got pretty heated, I was gonna tell you that. But, but I made my point, and my concern is this. I'm told that we're gonna do a certain thing, or be told a certain thing, within a time constraint. Not holding anybody to that time constraint. But I have to go to the town board and be presented with another scenario or option based on three previous options, when I'm not even made aware of it, and a certain other individual, Mark Merrill, will not make aware of this. I gotta go there and find this out. And I take exception to that, because that person was supposed to get home. And I'm not gonna name names or whatever. But I will say this, in ending my case here, that it's also interesting that after twenty-eight days, I had a village trustee come to my house yesterday, I wasn't home, I was on duty, to find out that that individual came and said, "Well, did anybody come to your house to discuss this with you as far as the potential of having this bike path?" The answer, my wife can answer that, but I can tell you this. The only two people that came there with that, my request, because I made enough ruckus about it, was Harry, our county legislature, and the mayor, Gary Rivers. Now, my wife could tell you. I'll defer her, she could take the next five minutes.
Oh, thanks.
Only five.
Okay, George, Sue Favreau, 61 Chapman Street. I did have a nice visit yesterday from one of the village board members. And we talked about the storm drain, we talked about the water shut off, we talked about taking possibly ten feet plus a three-foot buffer for my front yard, which, I know Harry's had a dream of having a bike path, but you know, my husband and I work really hard around my house. We have a nice home, and the thing of it is, we don't have any sidewalks on Upper Chapman, and it would really, my tree would have to be gone. It's really, really, really bothering me a lot. And you look up the street, and the poor people up the street would lose all the land. They would just have their front porch. I mean, it's just, it's such a busy street. I sit out on my porch in the summer, and I watch all, very few bicyclists go by. The other day, I was coming up Chapman, and Sandy's family, there was this Canadian couple that had a bike ride in the back. They got out of their car, got on their bikes, and headed out of town. And I just can't see kids riding their bikes up to school, because I'm sure the school would rather have the kids on the buses than riding up the golf course road, where it's fifty-five miles an hour. So, you know, I am very upset, and I'm very upset that we were not told. Everybody does not hit the Foxborough Press, and I was very upset that nobody came around to the residence on Chapman Street to let them know what was going on. And because I do feel Chapman Street is very, 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 very busy. As far as traffic from school, three o'clock, all the time. You get that four-way stop sign, sometimes the traffic going up that golf course road is unbelievable. And I'll say to my husband, "Good thing there's not a kid passing that road, because they'd be hit." It's just, it's just not a good route. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark.
Okay, New York State law, RCNY Section 4-08, block or obstructing a bike lane. No person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle in any bike lane within a designated bicycle lane. That means, by New York State law, if you run a bike path down Chapman Street, there will be no parking, none. It's illegal. You can't put your garbage cans out in the bike path, you can't stand in the bike path. Now, as per my conversation with Mr. McManus, he said it would come one foot the other side of the sidewalk. That's gonna remove the sidewalk from Chapman Street. Without that sidewalk, my house will flood every time it rains. The sidewalk holds back the rainwater. You're gonna remove the sidewalk, you're gonna put in a bicycle lane? I say, no way. You gotta rethink this.
Calvin Cologne, 41 Chapman Street. I was just wondering if anybody on the board knows the infrastructure of that street, Chapman Street? There are sewage lines on both sides of the street, which would be covered by tarmac. There's a power line on one side, on the north side, on the south side, there's water shut offs, and sewer line. Now, can you tell me how you're gonna do repairs on a sewer line that's been tarmac over?
Brian, can you answer that?
We would have to cut the tarmac and do the repairs.
That's real good, that's smart.
That's more money for the...
That's more money. That's more money for the village.
No. Mr. Recie.
Hi, how are you doing? 34 Maple Street, High Street. Hey, where were you working? Now, I have a few points to point out, please, okay? Now, I live in a driveway that my neighbor has, this long hedgerow, right? People that go in and out of my driveway have almost had accidents now as it is. I myself almost ran over Toby Etse, didn't even see him, okay? Right? I have a certificate of business for my property. I have Rentswright Automotive. It's registered, I'm there, I did it before zoning, so I'm not residential property. I have an automotive garage. I don't want a bike path in front of me, really. I use my whole yard as a driveway, I do now, okay? Don't you think there's more important things for us to point needs of bike path? We really think about it. This is trivial. We have this down-street renewal thing we just went through, and we're going through. Can't have light signs, come on. What year is it? Has it brought us in business? No, it's chased it away. Our downtown's a ghost town. What do you want, a museum or a community?
Thank you. Thank you. Yep?
I live on 30 Chapman Street, and let me tell you, that's one of the busiest streets in Rouse's Point. And I have bedrooms right in the front, and from morning till night, that there's traffic going on that street is one of the busiest.
Gloria Fitz, H Chapman Street. My question to the board is, with the post office where it is, and you have a handicap ramp, I live there, in my kitchen you can see the post office. Do you know how many people that have, can't walk a long ways, that go into that post office? And not only that, if you can't park on either side, and you can't, it will be illegal. Everybody in the room knows my husband is handicapped. And I pull in front of my house. Is it gonna be legal for me to put my four-way flashers on and take my husband out in front of my ramp? I'd like you to think about that and all the people that go to the post office. Thank you.
My name is Beth Gravel. I used to live on Chapman Street when I moved. And why don't you put more money into this lake? You have a beautiful lake. Why don't you figure out something to do with the lake instead? You know, to get more people into the village. The bike path isn't gonna amount to, I mean, how would you like it? Any of you guys, like it in front of your house? You'd have to take the land away from your house that you paid for and lived there for how many years? How would you like it? Would you not be very happy about it? No. You would not like your driveway or whatever, you know, shortened up, or your porch? You know?
That's Karen Poole, 47 Chapman Street. Chapman Street is a very, very busy street. And the cars go by there at all speed limits. And it's hard enough to back out of that driveway. Now, not only do we have to watch out for speeding cars, we have to watch out for bicyclists. And I think it's just a tragedy just waiting to happen. And I think that this money or grant could be used like for a beach. Right on Lake Champlain?
Yeah. Very good.
Where everybody could get themselves...
Everybody done now? Just a couple of comments. One, as far as the beach is concerned, somebody tell me where you can put a beach. We have been down this road and down this road with previous maintenance, not just way back. We had a beach down by the bridge, and when they did the bridge over and stuff, they took the water away, the current away, and it filled it with weeds, and there's nothing you can do about it.
Can I say something? Then why do you want...
Now, let me finish something.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yep.
Despite that, we were approached, the village of Champlain, the town of Champlain, and the village of Rouse's Point, that it was possible, and there was a grant out there, if we all agree, that as much as the village of Rouse's Point have done. We know nothing about it, we don't know where it's gonna go, and I think everybody thought I was fooling, but Mr. Favreau, am I right?
That's a comment you made to me, but here we can. Let's go back a step here.
Now, you just said you heard three different things of Champlain. We haven't heard a thing, except the original thing.
Right. That goes back to communication. Has been absolutely zippo, nothing. Nobody tells us a thing, nobody comes around in canvases, the potential people that it's gonna impact, a fire... Yeah, but you guys, what you did, not use yours...
You gotta have something to talk about when you vote somebody.
Absolutely.
I'd walk and say, "Well, we're gonna put a bike path in, but I don't know where it's gonna go."
No, but you, no, but the previous board signed off and said, "Hey, here's your right-of-way. You take as many feet as you want. If you want ten feet, take ten. If you want fifteen, take fifteen." So, there wasn't much thought there either, so don't...
I don't wanna delay whoever it is, but it's over there, McManus, who is the one that started this whole thing.
You wanna go ahead and...
Yeah. I don't know if everybody realizes, but in New York State, in the B and T law, every street, every, whatever it is, in every town, there is a, what they call a bike lane or a bike path. I think Harry knows that, right? So, it's for bicycles, and it's for skateboards and whatnot. They have to obey the law, just like automobiles do and whatnot. The village of Rouse's Point also adopted one, which is part of the B and T, which is 101.11. And it says basically the same thing. We already have that. So, that is in the law. I don't know why, I don't care, but my concern is, if you're putting up, you're gonna put up another bike path like that, and you're gonna go over near the houses, and all of a sudden, something happens, somebody backs out, somebody gets hurt, who's gonna, what's gonna happen to the, first of all, the devaluation of the homes on both sides? What's gonna happen to the insurance for the village of Rouse's Point? Is that, is the village, is the insurance gonna have to go up astronomical? The taxpayers are gonna have to pay for that? Because it sounds to me, if it's gonna go close enough to homes or whatnot, where there's blind spots, it's bad enough there's blind spots. But when something like that's gonna happen, I'm really concerned about that. Not for myself, but for the people that are riding on it. Now, in the village, anybody that's, anybody, in fact, any place, if they're under thirteen years old, they can use a sidewalk, anybody, old or not, cannot use a sidewalk. I think Clifford can attest to this. I know that very well. I was four years...
That is our local call.
I know it very well. I happen to be there, if you are.
Tom Bass of Montgomery Street. I'll be brief. Rouse's Point has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last, well, forty to fifty years, but say a quarter of a million dollars in sidewalk repairs and maintenance in ten years. I think that's what it was budgeted, about twenty-five thousand a year. We have an infrastructure to handle the flow of bicycles and pedestrians in Rouse's Point. I mean, there may be a few hundred feet of sidewalk here and there that we could add to the system. But basically, we've addressed this. The town of Champlain has no infrastructure whatsoever for anything. It's just a highway department, basically. They're moving into other areas now, but they're the ones, if they wanna build this out on the golf course road, that's fine. But I don't think that we should have to modify our system of handling pedestrians, bicycles, automobiles in the village to accommodate this thoroughfare to connect the two villages. The same thing with Champlain. They've got sidewalks and streets, they're residential streets, they're not the, it's not like you're driving down Route 11 on a bicycle, or walking where the cars are going fifty, sixty miles an hour. You're in a confined area, you got stop signs every few hundred feet, slows the traffic down, maximum speed's thirty miles, most of the places fifteen or twenty-five in the village. I don't think that we need to modify our existing infrastructure to this extent. I mean, maybe a sign here, maybe a little ramp down a sidewalk that blends into the road or something, but nothing like this, where you're taking people's land away from them. This is not right. And I don't think it's worth the money for us to spend. We're putting our money in our town taxes to pay for the part that the town's supposed to build.
And who's gonna take care of this bike path after, after it's done?
I don't have those answers.
Well, you're, 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 you're making a little work of this stuff, George.
You know what? You're preaching to a choir, because we don't have an...
Well, you, you've governed the village.
Can I say something? Then what are you here for? Are you here to talk to you? You have these board meetings, and we're here to express our...
That's right.
Who are you saying this?
I have one question. I'm not, I don't mean this to the rude way to anybody. This started in 2012, so...
Nobody knew about it.
Nobody knew about it till a week ago.
No.
That's about it.
Some of the names...
Junior, Junior, the initial...
One at a time.
The initial map encompassed the town of Champlain, right, Harry?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we come into this new map, which nobody knew about, like I mentioned to you previously. The town of Champlain had no idea about this map. I passed it around with the media. Harry was there. That's, and you know, the news media and all this, or the paper, a lot of people don't have internet, some people don't get the paper. Once again, the communication, the fact that nobody came to us. Now, as far as, yeah, you sit there and say, "I don't know, I don't know," you probably don't, okay? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say you do or don't. But I will tell you this, my firm belief on this is, the folks here that take care of those people, gave the farm away when they said, "Here, I sign off, Clinton County legislator, take the property and do what you want to do." That's exactly what happened. So, you know, once again, I'm not gonna blame the present board, because you folks were on there, but you are representing us now. The previous board, you have to take ownership of the previous board, contrary to your dislikes or what have you.
Thank you, we don't...
Wait a minute, one at a time, please. I have your name, and I'll, when you do this, I can't...
Can I just say a couple things in relation to what, I really came here tonight to listen to you guys, and that was my purpose here. I'll give you the thirty-second tour up front. We got a $1.6 million grant, and grants to build a recreation trail connecting the two villages. We were given more points for connecting schools, we were given more points for connecting the lakefront. I met with Mr. Favreau and Mr. Merrill, and I asked them if possible, they could wait until the preliminary design was done. And that preliminary design is due this week. They made some very good suggestions. I also passed along and told them both I would pass along my input. I called the engineer this afternoon. The report's not done, but I said, "Can we specifically focus on two streets? Chapman Street and Maple Street?" And the decision was made with the input from you and also from me, that all we're going to be doing on those two streets is having a demarcation on the current road, which says, "Shared roadway," which is part of the law anyway. There will be signs going up, there's nothing that's going to be built on Maple, there's nothing that's going to be built on Chapman, until Upper Chapman. Upper Chapman, there is a slight difference. Now, Donald, correct me if I'm wrong, you told me that you were willing to go to five feet. So, and I programmed that into the engineer, and one of two things, and it'll kind of be your choice, one of two things, you can get a sidewalk, if you want one, within that area, or we can just add to the road. But there's gonna be no addition at all to Maple Street or to Chapman Street. There's going to be a marker in the road, which says, "Shared roadway," which is the law now. There'll be a sign up that says, "Shared roadway." That's it. The trail itself, as far as a separate built operation, will begin on the other side of the railroad tracks, but primarily, it'll be in the town of Champlain. So, I've listened to what you guys have told me, I've tried to make every effort, believe me, I've made at least three presentations, and each board, maybe you don't listen to Calvin Vision, maybe you don't get the newspaper. We have notified all of the people who we needed a right-of-way from. But none of this is on private property, this is all done within the village right away. But we're not even doing that. All we're doing now, and this just came out this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to email the two gentlemen that I've been emailing before, but I was very pleased, because they took our input, and they said, "Okay." And so, what it will be then, is a shared roadway. The same thing is, so you'll be able to park in front of your house, you'll be able to go to the post office. It's going to be no different than the law says right now. So, I mean, that's what I tried to do, I heard you loud and clear, and so I have attempted to make these changes. The engineer, late this afternoon, said, "The report's not ready, but I can focus in specifically on Maple and Chapman." So, that's where we are right now. I'm writing some of these things down, if there are other concerns that you have, but basically, there's gonna be no difference in your property at all. And I don't expect there's gonna be no building whatsoever. And, you know, I noticed a number of people parking both on Chapman and on Maple. You will continue to be able to do that. You'll be able to get in front of the post office. So, that's kind of where we are right now. I don't know whether that allays any of your fears, but that's where we are now.
Wait a minute, one, two, three, four, five, one at a time.
Harry?
No, he had his hand up.
Thank you. But I like your point system, okay? I just wanna make a point myself. Why don't we use Harris Road, go across the river, drive to find your pills, bring it to you? We don't piss anybody off? We don't have any neighbors that we have to put our business in? Hey, and then you just go a little further down the street? One path, you're in the lake.
We're gonna look at that this week. Again, responsive, trying to, this was an idea that both Donald and Mark had, about trying to look at different venues. But, we will run into major construction costs, first of all. Secondly, I'm not...
Major construction, you're talking about flooding a guy's house, and tearing up the family tree and yard, and...
No, we're not...
And parking, and all of a sudden, what are people running?
We're not doing that.
One at a time.
That is just...
Oh, sorry.
You heard what I said?
Yes, I did.
So, we're not doing any of the things that you just listed.
Yeah, that's how it starts. And it just keeps on bringing in and bringing in, you know? It's phenomenal. People think things up for top of the pile, and answer, and jump, and leap through hoops for it. There's more important things going on in the world. Really, seriously. I apologize.
Can I just make one more comment? Can I just make one more commentary? In relation to the money, okay? The money is part of a DOT Parks and Recreation Grant specifically set aside for recreation trails.
Maybe somebody else?
I'd like to answer that question. I have heard, the state does nothing for the Mars country. Right? Rouse's Point, they forgot about us. So now, here's a chance, here's a chance to get a chunk of their money. They are expanding, they don't give it to us. They ever gave back. Send that down to New York City.
I guess I would say that the money is specifically earmarked for recreation. I've done my best in an attempt to respond to your concerns, both Mark and Donald, because you guys, we went out, we had a good conversation, I came right over. I don't know what else to say, except that I think that if we look at the broader picture, I do think, you may not agree with this, I do believe that recreation trails are an asset to a community. They are, there's also a public safety issue there. I believe these things, and more than anecdotally, I think communities that have them are better off for them. We're in a situation where more people than ever are trying to exercise. This would give you an opportunity to do that without impacting the village of Rouse's Point so minimally, that I, I guess I would say, I'm gonna keep writing down your concerns and so on, but that's where we are as we speak right now.
Me?
Yes, you, I'm stuck with you.
Okay. Talking about recreation, why don't you put money into like someplace for kids? You know, spruce up the recreation park over there. It's, you know what I mean, like, put some money into that.
Everything we do here for kids, we're trying to get everybody, even most people, an opportunity to go do something, it's like, I can't go play in a playground now, I don't have to get on my bike and ride, so...
I know, but would you like that in front of your yard? Would you care if...
Everybody, as far as understanding, we have fourteen-foot easements on all the properties that we, where our house was built, so if they wanna come and build something, I'd have to let them build it, because there's a fourteen-foot easement to my property, I don't have any choice. We don't even have a sidewalk.
Well, we should have a choice, because we all pay taxes in this town. Everything should be voted on, it shouldn't be going behind doors, doing this, this, and that. It should be voted on with everybody, the whole of this...
There's no changes.
So, you know how that is. They say there are not gonna be changes, and then they'll tell you two hours, four days down the road, "Sorry, we're gonna have to do this." You know?
All right.
Sorry.
Calvin Cologne, 47 Chapman Street. I don't see how the board could even approve a bike path when they don't even have a plan.
We didn't approve a bike path. We approved that we would go along with the concept.
Well, we don't even have a concept. Why aren't we even talking about it until we have a concept?
I don't understand our work.
Well, I don't think anybody else does either.
Harry, to answer your question, you're absolutely correct when I talk to you about my front yard. That was the lesser of the three or four evils that we were discussing. Yes, we do not have sidewalks, and probably will have them.
You brought some, you brought some good stuff to the table tonight.
I'm trying to be responsive to concerns.
That's exactly right, and you should be. But I was quite taken, and I'm gonna bring it back up again about the town of Champlain meeting. I was quite taken out, you know, yeah, you got some information, and I wasn't holding you hostage for two weeks, or three weeks, or what have you, during our conversation about what you commented to Mark Merrill and I about. All I was bringing to light was the fact that, even if it's something miniscule, whatever, talk to us, let us know as soon as you hear something, even little tidbits. And then, you know, at this point, yeah, I'm liking what you're saying. Now, you know, like I said, the food's in the pudding here, but let's hope that we can push this forward and look for alternatives.
But I'm giving you people credit for your input, which impacted what I tried to do with the engineering, from the side of the... This is going to potentially, I, you know, you made a point, potentially, I could see building on those streets may not be the best choice. All that you're going to see is potentially a sign at the corner saying that this is a shared roadway, and in the four-foot area will be something, you've seen them before, it's not even striped off, it's on the road, just the way it is, there is no change. There is no change. It's a shared roadway, and it will have a picture of a bicycle. I don't know what else to do with this, except to say that I appreciate your comments. I'm trying to be...